Back. We had a nice break, a summer break there for monkey Caroline. Regular meeting of council in person and live stream electronically Tuesday, August first, two twenty three. We'll have our land acknowledgement. The council and staff of the township of Montague acknowledge that the sacred land on which the township of Montague is now located and this meeting is being held is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Alphampana and Shabi Nation. If we can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The move by councillor Abbas and second by councillor Craftry that the regular meeting of council agenda dated August first, twenty twenty three be approved as presented this date. All in favor? Let's carry. This point in time, if you have any disclosure of interest or any time during the meeting to declare it. Move by councillor Craftry, second by councillor Kenny, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, June twentieth, twenty twenty three be approved as presented. All in favor? Let's carry. Any business arising from our move? So our delegations this evening, we have Amber Popo from our Valley Heartland Community Futures.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to tell you I tapped the room, say if I could, yeah, right. You guys feeling okay? Oh, perfect. You guys have a good day? So I am Amber Cole. I'm the Business Development Officer for Valley Heartland Community Futures. We're just down the road in Smith Falls is where we are located. So we're kind of out doing the tour of Larnar County and North Lees, visiting all the lower tiers, reintroducing ourselves to the community after two and a half years of being virtual and not seeing people in person. So that's what brings me here tonight. Tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do for the community. So we are a community futures development corporation. And about thirty five years ago, the federal government established our offices across Canada in rural communities to better support local economy and rural based businesses. We are one of fifteen in eastern Ontario and we are a nonprofit. So our service territory, all of our offices have our own carpet service area. We cover all of Larnar County and the northern portions of Lees and Brendel. So the community along the Meadow Canal. And we are the second largest CFC in eastern Ontario, the third largest in southern Ontario in terms of geography coverage. Takes quite a long time to drive from Elgin all the way to Pacingham as in Penrith. So all of our offices have three pillars of business. We do business loan, business advisory and community economic development. So every year we receive ongoing operational funds from the federal government to support some of those initiatives. So in terms of business loans, some of that funding goes towards our maintenance of our community investment fund, which I'll talk about soon. Business advisory, so offering support to businesses to develop business plans, registering their business, workshops, trading, that sort of thing. A whole of a roundabout like business center is basically what we provide and then community economic development. Or we might partner with a nonprofit or community to work on initiative around economic development. So a lot of what I'll talk about tonight is around our community investment fund. So thirty five years ago, when we opened, we were gifted about a million dollars to grow by lending out to businesses in our community with repayable and respending loans. Today we manage about nine and a half million dollars. So we've been able to grow that fund significantly over the years. Which is pretty precious, impressive considering we only serviced Smith Falls the first year of operation. We used to do like four loans a year. Now we do about twenty four to thirty five on a good year. It hasn't been so great since the pandemic, but on a good year, that's what's up. So since that time, we've lent out about thirty three million dollars and gone out to the community over time. And we can lend to, we say small businesses, but it's a pretty broad term. So we can lend to businesses up to five hundred employees and about twenty million dollars in revenue a year. So when we say we're not a traditional lender, it's because we don't put businesses in the same box as a bank. We're meant to be flexible and we really look at the impact of business size on our local community. So we use the five Cs of lightning. So we look at character of the person, the impact of community to community, capital, collateral and capacity. So what do you bring to the table as an entrepreneur? And we are often a lot more flexible. So often when you go to a bank, you don't get seasonal payments. They're not willing. You can't just pick up the phone and say, hey, Amber, we're having a rough patch. We maybe look at restructuring the loan so we can get through it. That's the type of flexibility that we provide. And we're also local. So all our staff are local. Our board of directors is local. So we really look at the impact of our community when we're making these funding decisions. So we do have some parameters. We can only lend up to three hundred thousand dollars and we have to be at a base rate of front plus two. And those parameters are put in place by the federal government. But we never penalize the business if they want to pay off early. There's no penny fees or extra fees. We do charge a small admin fee for applications and to cover a nonprofit that just offset our cost to be franchised. This is a couple months old, but right now we have about seven million dollars in the community, which is about sixty one percent of our active portfolio ratio. We typically prefer to be, for it to be closer to ninety percent. But when interest rates dropped to zero, the banks paid off a significant amount of our loans, around thirty of them. So that's really seen that drop. But right now there's about seven million dollars at work in the community. And you can see here the breakdown by municipality. And this fluctuates. Loans come in, loans go out. So on the business service side, it doesn't matter if you're a local client of Valley Heartland, this service is available to all entrepreneurs for free. So you can come in. We help you with your business plan, answer general questions. This might include workshops, webinars, that sort of thing. And on average, we respond to about seven hundred general inquiries a year. That could be a phone call, a walk in, a quick little meeting, someone just coming in wanting to know how to register business, how to handle it, just to do that sort of thing. If it's something where staff spend significant amount of time, let's say an hour plus with somebody, then we consider it an advisory meeting. So we do about two hundred and forty five a year. When it's a week, it's mostly me. That's usually what I'm doing. And then we usually host around six workshops or webinar a year. And sometimes we bring in outside expertise and sometimes we provide them ourselves. Our physical office is quite interesting. So in twenty twenty, we rented it. We have about five thousand square foot facility and fourteen hundred square feet of that is a training facility where we do in-person workshops. But we also wired it with virtual reality for wireless virtual reality training for still trades. So that all happens in Smith Falls. We also host small conferences and training for businesses. So like if a large manufacturer needs to train all their staff, they are rooms available for them to do that. And all the latest technology, I heard you guys are upgrading for TV instead of a projector. We do the same thing. We have a hundred and sixty four inch television screen. So we can host a lot of dynamic in-person training. We also put in a digital media lab. So this is basically the podcast and digital studio where businesses can come in and use all the equipment you can ever want. So we have podcast equipment, state of the art photography. We have an iPad that you can do augmented reality for your e-commerce site. And it's kind of a do it yourself lab. Where we have a, we have a summer student coming in to do community health tutorials. So it was, he was coming in with himself as well. And that was just recognizing that our rural community being to help bridge that digital divide. And then we also have turnkey offices. So we have a couple of businesses that co-locate with us and then other like organizations. Now in terms of key development support, like I said, we do receive a small amount of funds from the federal government for this. So this often ends up going towards sponsorship. So recently we sponsored the label surf conference for Ontario that was hosted in Perth a couple of weeks ago. Sometimes we'll partner with municipality if we're doing a feasibility study or something and like we want a couple of thousand dollars kept in for it something. We have some flexibility with that money to partner with CED partners. Now outside of Valley Heartland CED, we also have a contract with Larnar County to do economic development. So I also do the regional economic development for the county. We've had that contract for it is more than fifteen years now. It's been around for quite some time. And since it's been in place, we've had a member of the county council sit on our board of directors. So right now the current representative is Bill King from Larnar Highlands. And every month I submit reports to him, review reports for the county council for rest of the, of the contract. One of the big things we just tackled with this is we launched a brand for Larnar County Economic Development and a new investment website. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out, please view each of the lower tiers I featured on it. And I did a presentation on this and an update on our FDE contract in March and February. So that's on Larnar County website if you were sitting. And then this is just a lovely little quote from our current chair, Rupde. So as I mentioned, we do have eleven board members currently and they are spread out from across the family and who staff. And I know that's a lot of information. I just, very short amount of time, but I'm absolutely able to answer any questions.
I mean, it's just great, Amber. I think, I mean, we have to see some of this with Cameron as well. So so you're down. We can help, we can help people come see you. I think maybe some of it might be worth taking a raise as well. They might be like, definitely try to set this small, this is something that's great. You didn't touch on any of the, 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 the grand stuff and the student grant activities at all? Was that?
So we haven't had a grant in about three years because we're registered as a service delivery agent for the federal government. When they have fun, they want to deliver locally, they can tap into CFC's deliver on their behalf. What's been happening recently is the federal government's been delivering projects themselves. Which is unfortunate because here's the benefit. When we have a local grant and Larnar County businesses are applying and that application comes to me, if they have questions, I answer the phone. If I have questions on their application, I can tell them. Everyone's not a great grant writer. So we recognize that and that really opens up for dialogue to improve what, make it a little more of an equal process. And then we evaluate everything locally and we, the money comes out locally. So when it's done at the federal level, sometimes you kind of get lost in the midst of businesses from across the province, right? Toronto or even nationally sometimes. So we have been advocating to have those grants back. And that said, a lot of what I do for advisory is businesses coming in looking for grants. And because we're very familiar with working the system and finding what's available and helping businesses prep your application for those things, we do that a lot.
That's, that's, I think the biggest thing is if I were to start a small, if I want to start a small business tomorrow, one of my first stops should be to go and see you guys, just to, just to make sure I'm, I'm starting it up or, or whatever else it might be.
Well, we do a lot of referrals too. So we're very well connected. There's a small business advisory center that services the same territory as us. There's different levels of mentorship people can tap into. So that's a lot of what I do is referring to the program very well. But because we're also economic development, it really makes for a holistic approach. So a lot of times I mean municipalities, when someone comes in to talk to FDE, they're referring them on to us. When you come in for Larnar County FDE, I can talk to you about expanding into whatever community you're interested in. You can also sit down and just start working on your business plan the right way. So it makes for a really holistic approach and reduces some of like the bounce around businesses get sometimes trying to navigate system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, councillors. Nice to meet you all. My name is Sherry Manier and I'm here tonight to talk about proposed risk-based enhancements to the twenty twenty three animal control by law. The new animal control by law has been proposed by the township of Montague to replace spell control by law number twenty seven fifty two dash two thousand and three. The township had requested feedback from the community based on that, the draft by law. Risk-based enhancements to the draft by law are proposed which increase the number of requirements and controls for higher risk dogs. Increase the license fees and fines for higher risk stocks. Improves identification, tracking and monitoring, which is all required for higher risk stocks. Restricts breeding of higher risk stocks and limits the number of higher risk stocks permitted per property. The logic behind this. Tiered controls based on risks to public safety are recommended. All prohibited, grandfather prohibited, dangerous, vicious, nuisance stocks are all classifications of dogs under the name twenty twenty three by law. All of these stocks pose a greater risk to public safety. They all require more conditions and controls both on and off the owner's property. They all require expeditional identification and monitoring by the clerk of ministry to better track high-risk dogs within the township. They all require greater by law enforcement. Therefore, there are greater financial costs to the township and hence the tax bills. Tiered license fees and increased funds are required in order to offset the costs for increased by law enforcement for these high-risk stocks. They're also required to motivate owners of higher risk stocks to comply with the bylaws additional requirements to reduce reoffending. It's also important to reinforce to owners that non-compliance to the bylaw is a serious offense. Okay, this risk matrix is the twenty twenty three by law dogs, dog classifications and risk to public safety. The column on the left shows the draft dog classifications and the chart is color coded to illustrate risk to public safety. So what we're showing here is that the highest risk is shown in red and lower risk is shown in green. The highest risk dogs shown in red include prohibited, grandfather prohibited and dangerous dogs. All of these dogs have already attacked or bitten a person or animal without provocation or had previously been deemed with us under the old bylaw twenty seven fifty two dash two thousand and three. Or are dogs that are declared prohibited by the bylaw enforcement officer under the proposed twenty twenty three draft by law. High-risk dogs shown here in orange include vicious dogs. These are dogs that have displayed vicious or aggressive tendencies. Medium-risk dogs shown here in yellow include nuisance dogs. These dogs pose a potential threat since they are not not under owner's control and have a history of either running at large or chasing these dogs have greater potential to become a higher risk dog if they continue this behavior. It's recommended that the township crack down on nuisance dogs. Primarily dogs that are nicknamed at large before they become a greater risk to the community. All of these higher risk dogs require monitoring by the township and additional controls by the owner. Why? All in order to reduce the potential for high-risk offenses. Now, the vast majority of the dogs in the township are low-risk dogs. These are shown in green. These dogs pose a low threat to the community. They're under an owner's control and they don't require any additional monitoring or controls by the owners other than standard license fees and immunization. Same today. This second risk matrix shows the number of bylaw controls increases with risk. Again, dog classifications are shown in first column on the left and risks are shown color-coded where red represents the greatest risk. The headings at the top of this chart illustrate the controls and monitors required based on risk. Controls include tiered license fees where fees are higher for the highest risk dogs. Tiered fees are required to offset the costs for increased enforcement of higher risk stocks. Proof of liability insurance is also required for the highest risk stocks. Additional controls for the highest risk dogs, these are dogs shown here in red and orange include enclosure and warning signs on the unused premises as well as muscling with the dog when off in these premises. It should be noted that these controls are not limited. These are exactly the same requirements that exist today under the current bylaw twenty seven fifty two dash two thousand and three. So no change here. Limiting the number of dogs per property. Today, there is a three-dog maximum per property for low-risk dogs. Multiple dogs do pose an increased risk due to the cat behavior of dogs. Therefore, risks are even higher for more than one vicious dog or more than one grandfather prohibitive dog residing on the same property. In order to, to reduce risk going forward, the number of dogs allowed per property should be limited for, for the highest risk dogs. Breeding of higher risk dogs is not permitted. Other controls that are not shown on this chart include increased funds for higher risk dogs that reoffend as well as controls on visiting dogs. Monitors and tracking. Improved identification and monitoring and tracking are required for higher risk dogs. Include improved microchipping for identification and tracking of these dogs. As well as monitoring changes to dog ownership as well as where the dog, the dog's owner is lost. So if they change address, you reach to know. Well, why are these monitors important? Monitors are required for the responsible movement of higher risk dogs both into the township, within the township, and when they leave the township. The dog's designation by bylaw enforcement, including dangerous or vicious, is a tab that travels with the dog. It stays with the dog. So if they move locations, that should go with the dog. The township needs to know the location of these higher risk stocks for owner compliance and enforcement as well as to transfer the dog's information to a different municipality if the dog moves, wants to do it. We don't want high-risk dogs to reoffend and become a problem in a different municipality simply because they were unaware that a dangerous dog moved into their area. With a conscience, we must demonstrate due diligence by tracking higher risk stocks and sharing information about these higher risk stocks with the public. We can't have more victims of senseless and preventable dog attacks. Again, to keep everything in perspective with these risk matrices, the vast majority of dogs that reside in Montague, in our community are low-risk dogs. They don't require any additional monitoring or controls. To summarize, our community has a vested, vested interest in strong, fair and effective bylaws. The new twenty twenty three draft animal control by law is a significant improvement over the current bylaw, which is twenty seven fifty two dash two thousand and three. The new bylaw for two thousand and four dash twenty twenty three has additional requirements for higher risk laws, which are needed to address public safety concerns and help offset the costs for bylaw enforcement. Proposed risk-based enhancements will further strengthen the twenty twenty three by law going forward with tiered license fees, increased fines for reoffending high-risk dogs. Limits on, limits on the number of high-risk dogs allowed per property. And improved identification, monitoring and tracking for all higher risk dogs. We all have a shared responsibility to maintain and save community. It starts with a strong bylaw. It relies on responsible owners to comply with the bylaw. And as a very last resort, it relies on the enforcement of the bylaw. Thank you, council, for allowing me to include them on this bylaw and the opportunity to address. And then we'll move on to the report of our main sponsor. I'm ready to be your pen, Christian Quill. Hold the light, punch. Yeah.
The report that you have before you is with respect to a proposed communication tower installation of sort of in the proximity of Carroll and McLaughlin Road. We received a request from Explore Inc. for a letter of concurrence. This is just sort of a formality for council to direct staff to prepare the letter of concurrence that would be signed and sent to Explore Inc. to acknowledge that they complied with ISAD's requirements. Anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
The move by councillor Kenny and second by deputy Bree Carroll, the council authorized the staff to issue a letter of concurrence for Explore Inc.'s proposed forty five meter communication tower at about thirty in session ten. Township of Montague designated as part one and twenty seven R four nine three three. All in favor?
First and again. It's gonna seem like deja vu. I'm sure there are some members of council and perhaps even members of the public that are sitting here. So this is with respect to our request for closure and sale. Sort of started back in twenty eighteen. It's a three meter wide strip of vegetative land in Bristow subdivision between one ninety seven and two seventeen Bristow Drive. And so the, the owners of one ninety seven have requested that block forty five on that plan of subdivision, which the intent was that it would be used as the future walking path to potential development on adjacent lands. That's never happened thus far. And by conveying this block of land to an adjacent landowner, it's not going to prevent development on the adjacent land. It was just sort of a convenient walkway, we'll call it that. So it is simply a vegetative strip. And the owners of one ninety seven Bristow are requesting that that portion be closed and conveyed to them. But again, this has been for some reason delays. I'm not sure what those delays might have been. I know council in twenty nineteen declared block forty five surplus. And a deeming bylaw was passed and registered on title to block forty five. Since twenty eighteen, the, the other property that's adjacent to this vegetative strip at two seventeen Bristow has new owners. Since twenty eighteen, the other property that's adjacent to this vegetative strip at two seventeen Bristow has new owners. So staff feel that it is important to reach out to them and see if they would be interested in participating in a road closure process. That would require, if they were interested, they would be eligible for one half of the property. So basically, one and a half meters width. They would also have to share in the costs associated. So block forty five would also have to be resur surveyed, which would probably be caught. Well, I don't know how much it would cost, but it would, it would cost money. And then there would also be advertising fees. So they would have to pay their proportionate share if they were interested. If they're not interested, then the proposal is that block forty five be declared surplus and conveyed to the owners of one ninety seven Bristow. The report also goes on to say that staff are recommending that we don't obtain an appraisal for that strip of land. It's felt that the cost of that appraisal would probably far exceed the worth of that small piece of property, which is really of no benefit to anyone other than an adjacent owner and also by removing it out of the township's name. That also takes a liability away from the township if something were to happen on that piece of property.
Open up. Any questions? No. To move by Deputy Reed Carroll and second by Council Avast, that Council directs staff to contact the landowners at two seventeen Bristol Drive to ascertain whether they would be interested in purchasing a portion of block forty five on plan eighty, which would also require them to pay their proportionate share of the road closure process. And that Council directs staff to draft a bylaw declaring block forty five on plan eighty to be surplus to the needs of the township. And that Council directs staff to complete the road closing process without the requirement for obtaining an appraisal. All in favor? That's Carrie.
Thank you. And now we have Clerk Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is in relation to appointing billing and septic inspectors as alternates. So in two thousand and twenty two, prior to this council coming on, the Health Unit had notified municipalities that effective October one, they would no longer be responsible for septic systems and the installs and all of the reporting that goes along with them. And that we would have options to either use our conservation authorities, hire contractors, or have a qualified employee complete the works. With our CBO only being part-time of three days a week, it wasn't functional for him to also take on septics. So we have reached out to our alternate, the CBO Tracy Galoppo. And she accepted our request to come on as the septic inspector for the municipality and has been doing such ever since. With that being said, we have two internal employees that are taking the training and the courses to eventually become an alternate septic inspector as well, if successful in completing the courses. But in the meantime, we do need alternates. We have Beckwith CBO as an alternate for a CBO or any functions of the CP, CBO, which is party septics of the building code. But in addition to that, we've also had discussions with Drummond North Elmsley and they are willing to be on as alternates for us as well. So they have two. They have their CBO Peter Eklund and their Inspector Rick Patterson. So this evening, we're requesting that Council approve a bylaw to appoint Mr. Eklund and Mr. Patterson as alternate septic and building inspectors for us at the township in the event that somebody is away, sick, holidays, whatever the case is, at an hourly rate of sixty five dollars an hour and mileage that is similar to that of the county. Any questions?
I was gonna say, that's great. Once again, that kind of falls our shoes, kind of working with our neighbors. It's fantastic. And so make sure that we also have those people in place when we do, when we move this straight. So I think that people in township should be very happy that we're making sure that we have our people in place to those type of helping it all and everything else.
So move back, Council Avast, and second by Council Crabtree, that Council approved the appointment of Peter Eklund and Rick Patterson to be an alternate septic and building inspector for the township of Montague and that bylaw four thousand and five dash twenty twenty three be passed at council meeting on August first. All in favor? That's Carrie. Number one report from Ellie.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This one is in relation to one of our delegations this evening, the updated animal control bylaw. This was presented to Council prior to the break in June. We received comments that should stay until July twenty first, not June twenty first. And we received some comments. I was away on holidays last week, catching up this week, doing Paxil. So I did receive an email as well this week that there is an amendment this evening to what is included in the bylaw that was in your package. So there are a number of changes based on some comments and feedback, meetings with individuals within the community on the draft bylaw that was presented. So I did present a marked up version to Council with some of the changes. I don't think that anything is something that Council wasn't kind of looking for or already aware of. Under the dangerous dog definition, there was where a dog has been declared dangerous by another municipality, state, province, or country. So we added in basically that if we are aware of that documentation or we've been notified that it would still fall under those same categories in our municipality. So somebody can't. We're trying to eliminate dangerous dogs being filtered into our municipality from others that have those restrictions as well. So if they've bitten or been deemed dangerous somewhere else, we also are not going to, we're gonna prohibit them. There are changes are under two K. Yeah. So the definition of grandfather pit bull or prohibited dog, we're taking out the last sentence that was included in the current bylaw that is in front of you this evening and putting in taking out the last sentence and including a grandfather prohibited dog would be a dog deemed vicious by the bylaw enforcement officer under bylaw two seven five two two zero zero three prior to August first, twenty twenty three. So it's vicious because we didn't have a definition of dangerous. So if they were deemed vicious under our previous bylaw, they will be now a grandfather. Legal response was we can't retroactively implement a change into our bylaw and deem them prohibited. We have to grandfather it in, similar to what the province did with the pit bull whenever they did that. So. Again, under pit bull or prohibited dog, it was a dog that has been deemed declared dangerous, vicious, prohibited by another municipality, state, province, or country. But there's been an issue and we're aware of it. That will come to light. Prohibited animal, it was included for kept, bred, or raised, so that we don't allow breeding of prohibited animals either in the event that someone is caught doing that. Vicious animal, again, addition of a dog that's been declared doing vicious by another municipality. We put in bred, so keep, harbor, or breed any of those kind of prohibited, dangerous type animals. So basically that we are not allowing any of that. Limitations of pets. So we've kind of clarified on the non-resident dog. So non-resident dog is allowed for up to thirty days. We've now put a number of not more than two dogs with the exception of the approval for a circumstance, Council can always approve an extended period of time for some kind of circumstance for that. But we think that two dogs for thirty days as a non-resident visiting or looking after a family member should be reasonable. And if there's something outside of that, they can always approach the municipality. We've changed the licensing. So vicious dog increased to five hundred dollars per year. Every owner of a prohibited, dangerous, or vicious dog, which has been directed to be removed from the township, shall provide the township within forty eight hours with a microchip number of the animal, the name and address of the new owner, so that the clerk administrator can notify the new municipality of the assigned designation. So kind of as Sherry had mentioned in her delegation, that we're starting to proactively work with our other municipalities and maybe if we're the ones that started, others may also come on board of sharing this information so that we don't have, again, ninety eight percent or ninety nine percent of the dogs are not an issue, but that we're not just sending our problems somewhere else, right? So that we notify people of that. And every owner of a prohibited grandfather, dangerous, or vicious dog must notify the township within forty eight hours of a change in ownership and or residency of the dog, along with the new address and owner information. So in the event that a grandfather dog is rehomed, maybe within our municipality, they have to provide us the new owner, the resident, those things. So that we're keeping track of where those animals are for our bylaw enforcement officer as well. I'm sure everybody's looked at it. I'm just going through. So then, within fourteen days of notification, the owner of a dangerous dog must post warning, dangerous dog, let's hear signs on the entrance of the property. We've included that the sign must have minimum letter sizes of four inches. Right now, when it doesn't say, you could get somebody that puts, right, something that small. So we're trying to eliminate that gray area. You have to put a sign up. This is the letter sign. This is what it's going to be. Within fourteen days of notification, the owner shall provide all documentation required under section four F of the bylaw. Failure to comply will result in removal of the animal. So bylaw will go in and take the animal if it's not complied with. So no owner shall be permitted to keep more than one dangerous dog on a property. So again, we can't retroactively and moving forward, it shouldn't even be an issue because they would be removed, but we wanted to make sure that it was documented. It's very similar changes to the vicious side of things. And now I'm gonna clear up, clear up the farm side of, I think that there was maybe some misconception on the farm side of things and Schedule A as prohibited animals enlisted there as horses and things like that. So section fourteen is exemption. So any properties that are zoned correctly to allow those animals or farms are exempt from the Schedule A prohibition of the horses and those type of animals. So we're not trying to take away any kind of livestock from farms or any of those things. Same as the nuisance animals. So the noises as far as animals coming from farms, cows, donkeys, horses, that does not fall under nuisance. We're a rural community. Those noises come from the farms. It's more so related to kind of the dogs that are outside barking twelve hours a day and those type of things. So we're not trying to in any way change the rural feel or the rural setting. And we're not prohibiting any kind of animals that are allowed in zoning. Now, we did receive some comments. They're included in relation to the setback from a kennel to a residential use, which is actually accounted for in a zoning bylaw of a hundred and fifty meters. Staff, oh, curse of the earth. So we have been in discussions. We are under a review of our zoning bylaw and looking at changes. So we are already discussing some of those changes as far as the hundred and fifty meters step back from a residential use. Property lines is a very different thing than a residential use. So we're looking at all of those things as well as what would be reasonable and maybe something as far as those. But those comments will be put forward to the zoning bylaw amendment as a comment for that because it would be more addressed in that situation. I think it was great. We had great feedback. We had, the community was actually very thankful for us asking for feedback. So it was really good. In Schedule Appendix A, this evening, we will be adding I'm just gonna pull a word in. I know it's in the reservation, but. Which Schedule Appendix A shows the prohibited. So we did put in dangerous dogs as deemed on or after the date of bylaw four thousand and four dash twenty twenty three. Again, we did not have the definition of dangerous and vicious dogs are dealt with earlier on in the bylaw. So we have included that in there. And the fees have been, have been changed in the bylaw that presented to Council this evening. And these are, these fees are items that the bylaw enforcement officer, animal control, and myself are going to be keeping track of these and the actual costs associated with any that are deemed vicious or dangerous, because we haven't had a lot of issues to have that feedback of, is five hundred dollars a year actually enough? This is for the licensing side, to make sure that that covers our cost for some, for the extra time. So for the fines and charges, we've increased make false statement of sterilization to three hundred dollars. We've increased, we've added own harbor or breed a prohibited animal. So we've added breed to those items. Fail to maintain effective control of a dangerous or vicious dog with the proper sections, we've changed that from two fifty to five hundred. Permit dog attack by a person animal, two fifty to five hundred. And I'm not saying that these won't be looked at or changed, just like our fees and charges every year. Fail to post warning signs will be two hundred and fifty dollars. Plus, if you don't do it within the fourteen days, we may also be taking your animal. And if we put it in the pound, you'll have all those fees as well. So I think that as far as a fairly quick turnaround with information, feedback from the community, and working towards a better tool for our bylaw enforcement animal control officer, we feel that this is a reasonable step forward. But again, in the resolution that it's going to be on our action tracking list, that staff is to bring this back within twelve months, if not sooner, but within a twelve month period.
Open it up. Questions, comments?
Yep.
Ellie, I think this is, this is good. I mean, it was a quick turnaround of time. I think the people here are obviously, that's why they're here. And I think there's been a lot of work put into it. And that's been acknowledged by I think a lot of the residents too as well as far as making it a statement possible, like we stated to as well. Ninety nine percent of dogs aren't affected by this at all. It's the very little bit. I think the clarification of the farm side of things, I think there was a little misconception of it out there that was, that was put out there. That was, that was cleared up very quickly to us all, which I think was fantastic. I think we have something now that has a little more meat in the bone. And that's, that'll help keep people safe in those hopefully very rare cases, because like you said, we haven't had a lot of instances. And we want to hopefully try to keep it that way to as well. So I think kudos to the staff and also the caller for being engaged too as well and giving us that feedback. Cause I think that's a vital part of it too as well. So I think we have something that's, that's gonna, that's a great, a great place to be. And like you said, I think over the year, we're gonna, we'll circle back and see how things go. So and that's great.
Nice. Good question. Perhaps I missed it before, but if we have a prohibited, dangerous, or vicious dog that we're we're saying is not safe to be within the township, are we giving people opportunity to rehome it to another township? Wouldn't that be passing our problem on?
So we have to, we cannot. The courts can make them euthanize. So if they're, if we bring them to court and it goes through the court system, potentially it would be euthanized. Okay. So in a situation like that, we don't have that. So in most cases, it probably is going to go through that route if it's to that extent. But otherwise, we have to give them the opportunity to rehome the dog or the animal somewhere else.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, so it's just that we don't have the power to use. And I, we wanted, it has to just go through different counties township and they start the whole process over again.
But we're going to advise them. So it may come to a situation where depending on their bylaws, they may have to end up euthanizing the animal because they have nowhere else to put it. If everybody has a similar type of bylaw.
Right, right, right. Okay.
So move by Council Crabtree and second by Council Kenny, that Council approved the animal control bylaw as amended this date to remove the last sentence in section two K and include a new section with the words, a grandfather prohibited dog would be a dog deemed vicious by the bylaw enforcement officer under bylaw twenty seven fifty two dash twenty two thousand and three prior to August first, twenty twenty three. And that Council amend Appendix A to include dangerous dog as deemed on or after the date of bylaw four thousand and four, twenty twenty three. And that Council requests a report update on the animal control bylaw with twelve months of the passing of the new bylaw for review and updating. All in favor? Carrie.
Our reports committee. First one is with by Council Kenny.
First one is moved by Councilor Kenny, second by Deputy Reed Carroll, that council approved the minutes of many a whole meeting of June twentieth, twenty twenty-three and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? That's Carrie. Moved by Deputy Reed Carroll, second by Councilor Abbas, that council approved the minutes of the Montague Recreation and Culture Committee meeting of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three and approve the recommendation contained within. All in favor? That's Carrie. Move by Councilor Abbas, second by Councilor Crabtree, that council accepts the meritful library board minutes from March twenty twenty-three, June twenty twenty-three and special June twenty twenty-three as information. All in favor? That's Carrie. We move to our bylaws because we have multiple. Move by Councilor Crabtree, second by Councilor Kenny, that bylaw four thousand three dash twenty twenty-three a bylaw to establish our user fees and charges administered by the Corporation of the Township of Montague. Be read at first, second and third time, pass, sign and seal this first day of August twenty twenty-three. All in favor? That's Carrie. Move by Councilor Kenny and second by Deputy Reed Carroll, that bylaw four thousand and four twenty twenty-three has amended this date, being a bylaw to regulate the keeping and control of animals or any class thereof, the animal identification system, licensing and the restraint of dogs and certain other aspects of animal control within the Township of Montague. Be read at first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this first day of August twenty twenty-three. All in favor? Let's pass. Move by Deputy Reed Carroll, second by Councilor Abbas, that bylaw four thousand and five twenty twenty-three a bylaw to appoint Peter Eckman and Rick Patterson as building and safety inspectors. Be read at first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this first day of August twenty twenty-three. All in favor? That's Carrie. So I have no motion, notice, or motion, no items from our information moved forward. But this time I'll open it up to any questions. Comment.
Let's turn the hallway clear.
Yeah.
Uh, I got a letter from here. I'd like to speak about it. You see from Montague? Do I do it now or later?
Is it in relation to the agenda?
I don't know what your agenda is. It's related to my tax bill.
So no, that we would speak after the meeting. It that, that would not be a public discussion.
Well, how do I complain about receiving this letter? I received it from you.
That's, that's right. So you can speak to me not in a public meeting.
So it's a cover up, not at a public meeting. You don't want to hear about it in a public meeting.
Absolutely, it's not. It's that it's your public, it's your private information that you're going to put in the public.
I'll put it in public. It's, it's, I received a letter from you that says my taxes aren't paid. My taxes are due June thirtieth, not June fifth, and the flutter comes. This here is a waste of the lack paper written on the envelope and the postage. How many of these did you send in and waste our tax money?
So I can prove to that. So thank you, Karen. So even though this is, well, council wants me to address that, it was probably. Okay, so we send out reminder notices. That was a friendly reminder notice.
Uh, it doesn't say friendly. It does not say, I received notices that said friendly, and this does not. I'm going to.
Sir, you can, if you can please calm down. We're, normally we do not even take questions from the public of how you are coming at us right now, and we are accepting to take them. So it was a reminder because we get a number of phone calls from people who have no concept of what their taxes are owing or when they're due. It was nothing personal. You could have called us. We would have explained all of this to you and apologized if you took it as a personal offense. Everyone received it as a reminder that your June installment is due because we have a lot of people that do not know that it's due and they get charged an absurd amount of interest. So we thought as a friendly gesture, we will put that out to everyone. You could have simply called us. We would have advised you of this. It is nothing personal. It is not something that you need to yell at us about. We will not do it in the future. You will not receive it. It was a nice gesture that we tried, and clearly you were not happy with it. We will make note of that. But you have all the right to come and speak to us at any time in the office. We are always available for everyone.
I have a tax bill and it gives me the date that it's due. I don't, I can read and I'm not stupid. I know when the due date is.
I did not say that you were stupid, nor did I say that you couldn't read. What I stated was there's a number of people who have placed their bills or forget when they are due. This is not a personal attack at you. You could have come and spoke to us in the office.
It's a total waste of money. That's what it is. A waste of our tax dollars.
Making no.
I'd like to know if individually you agree with this letter because I want to know who I've voted for the next time and who I'm not.
Sir, you, that completely unacceptable behavior.
We will, I'll, we'll be the other side. We'll just head over here.
Sorry.
So does anybody have any questions that's relevant to our attendance?
I'd like to know whether it's just a rumor that I heard or whether it's true. Is there a a breeding or breeding kennel uh at the site where uh the vicious dog of the time, Sherry? Is, is there going to be a breeding kennel there, a boarding kennel? Yes, I, I heard a rumor. I just want to make sure.
I have no current application, but it'll come through my desk.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Do you have any online?
I'm on. Um, just a, a quick comment. I just wanted to thank this council for listening to the community and speaking our concerns seriously. The amount of work that you've done and it, it was incredible. You went at lightning speed to get this in place. And uh, we certainly as a community appreciate your efforts. So hats off to you.
So move by Councilor Abbas and second by Councilor Crabtree, that bylaw four thousand and six twenty twenty-three a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council at its regular meeting held on Tuesday, August second, twenty twenty-three. Be read at first, second and third time and pass, sign and seals this first day of August twenty twenty-three. All in favor? Carrie. So move by Councilor Crabtree and second by Councilor Kenny, that council adjourned the regular meeting of August first, twenty twenty-three at seven oh two P M. Until September fifth, twenty twenty-three at six P M or at the call of the chair. All in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you.
And we're back.
Welcome back, folks. Sorry, a little bit late. We just had lots of conversations going on after. So uh, we're back to do our community of the whole. Uh, let me open the meeting with the landing of the amendments, the council and staff of the Township of Montague acknowledge that this sacred land on which the Township of Montague is now located and this meeting is being held on ancestral and ceded territory of the Algonquin and Shabi Nation. Uh, so the adoption of the agenda, so move by Councilor Kenny, uh, second by Reeve Jennings. So the committee of the whole agenda dated August first, twenty twenty-three be approved as presented. All in favor? Okay, disclosure of interest, okay, sorry, disclosure of interest to say now, we have no delegations and our first thing on the docket is the reporter of this officer is the municipal law enforcement animal control contract, second quarter only, his animal control report. Uh, don't be sneaking that, right?
It's just that financial wise, we're substantially under, um, and we've had a number of properties cleaned up and some major issues actually that have fallen under the bylaw officers, so us as staff feel like they've done a great exceptional job and are very responsive and it's been a pleasure working with them as well, even though it's it's a hard transition when you've had somebody for twenty years, um, it's it's been a pleasure working with them so far.
Yeah, I think, yeah, because Lauren, I mean, we had Laura, that was a fantastic job for it for for a long time and sometimes that that new new people brings new light and everything else too as well. And I've heard that too as well for some of our property centers, like you said, uh, cleaned up some areas too as well, and I've heard the the neighbors of some of those places have been very happy with the things looking a lot better, so it's it's been a nice, a nice pickup as well, good, any other comments or?
Same as you, Jeff, I'm making nothing but positive things, saying that they're very, very responsive and that's great and it's actually really nice to see this report and you can just add to these findings.
Yeah, great, uh, so I'm moved by Reeve Jennings and second by councillor Crabtree, the council received twenty twenty-three second quarter report on bylaw enforcement animal control services as information, all in favor? Right, all right, then, uh, moving to the next one is the, uh, building reports, uh, everybody sees it there, I don't think, uh, like you talked about too much, we've seen the slowdown a little bit in the housing starts over the previous years, but I think, uh, you're still seeing some pretty good renovations and everything else there too as well, which is kind of nice, so any?
Sorry, yeah, I'm gonna be a talker tonight, Jeff. So, just so everybody knows, um, with having a summer student internally, um, we've actually gone back to look at a lot of our permits in our new homes and we interested in getting a lot of the, um, previous year's assessments that have been kind of missed by MPA or with that with COVID, they've been working from home and those sort of things. So, um, we're doing an internal basically review of all of those, um, so it's it's looking good as far as assessment wise that will be coming on to our twenty twenty-four as well.
So you're just confirming like that with those bills that the assessment is correct?
No, that they that MPA has actually assessed them.
Okay.
Yeah, so just basically with COVID and I'm working from home and some, you know, things fall through the cracks and things like that, so with our student, I've had them go through all of, um, gyms, uh, Excel building and then go on to municipal connect to see if it's actually been assessed or not, if not, then we're providing that that information to MPA to get that house assessed as quickly as possible. So it happens with a number of things, we're first starting with houses, then additions, then going on to some of the smaller things, but just nice having that student to go through, again, we have a part-time CBO, right, um, to go and it's been very busy the last couple of years to make sure that nothing's gone bad.
Well, I remember it was part of our, I remember, uh, when, uh, your first time council, uh, both Reeve Jennings and I were on, uh, we were kind of putting on the CBO saying we want to clean up some of those old files, all that kind of idea and then all of a sudden, wow, uh, so like he was, he was starting that process back in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen when things were you know, relatively okay, but but basically soon as he was getting into it, he got away, so it's good that we're following up and we're following through on that little objective a few years ago, do as well, that's fantastic. Great, great, thanks, Tucker, any other, uh, comments? No, good, so, uh, council, uh, moved, sorry, moved by councillor Crabtree and seconded by councillor Abbas that the council accepted the second quarter building report as presented in the state, all in favor? We have the fire reports, uh, our key career is not here today, uh, I think you were going to pre move out.
Well, I think he always, um, you know, my, I think they do so much for the community, um, like on here, he doesn't have his open house day and things like that, there was also a great thing that they put on, that they come out and enjoy and all those good things as well, but, um, their fire calls are obviously up a little bit, um, but they've been out there in the community and we do have some things planned, uh, with fire emergency management coming up in the fall, that'll be kind of exciting for the community as well.
Yeah, it's a great point that they do what they do in this community, that they're they're so helpful, like they help with the candidate events, which was, which was huge, uh, even the, um, Montigny School, when they had their graduation, they donated the flowers, so they were part of that too as well, when I was there, I was so surprised, yeah, like, like they're, they're very integrated, using and then doing a lot of great things, so they're very valuable, so. Any comments or questions? All right, so moved by councillor Abbas and seconded by councillor Kenny, that the council accepts the second quarter fire report as presented in the state, all in favor? Uh, the water report? We have no water issues right now, so that's good, uh, so any questions, comments, no, maybe, uh, moved by councillor Kenny and seconded by Reeve Jennings, that the council accepts the second quarter water report, uh, as information is presented in the state, all in favor? Planning report, we do have a planner in sitting here with, uh, I like, I like, I like putting them spot when I can, so let's say, uh, any comments or or anything about that?
No, uh, basically our applications are are down at this time. It's just the the nature of the timing of submissions, so.
And Tucker has something to say?
Again, just humping, everybody's tired after that last comment, so, um, the applications are down, but it's allowed Kirsten some time to work on her zoning bylaw that we are updating, so she's been staying busy and still doing an exceptional job, even though they are down.
Yeah, so yeah, we don't have any misconception right there that that she's, yes, it's another year, but, uh, there's, there's, there's always a reason why we, uh, we brought her on on board, uh, a couple of years ago there, because there's lots for her to do, so that's great, and I think we're gonna see, it might be a lull now, but that it won't, it won't last very long, so, uh, so moved by, any other questions or, okay, good, so moved by Reeve Jennings and seconded by councillor Crabtree, that the council accepts the second quarter planning report as information is presented in the state, all in favor? The next one is the septic ones, this is, uh, by Kirsten, I'm still getting the information from, uh, Tracy or maybe, or maybe you pull yourself, I guess.
Uh, that's why I put this together, just, uh, applications process, so there's really no comparable data from previous years because we just took this over in the fall, but, um, it has been busy and, uh, you know, we get applications all the time, um, and, you know, so far, our revenue to date this year is about, uh, ten thousand four hundred eighty dollars in septic, not obviously less, but that's been, it's been a good learning experience for me as well.
Okay, so you brought it up with a random question, what are the inspections, like what, what is that for, like what, what would a person ask for an inspection for?
Um, well, you might need an inspection if you have to replace your septic tank, you might need an inspection if you're getting a severance just to determine that the soil quality is, you know, supportive of a system, there's, there's different reasons for it, you might be getting an additional house and they need to do an inspection to make sure that the septic system is going to, um, facilitate.
Is there a requirement for regular inspection for waterfront property?
I believe there are certain properties that are part of a program, but, uh, I'm not sure if there is a requirement, I don't know if it's voluntary, oh, there's not very many of them.
Right, that's excellent, that's good, uh, moved by councillor Crabtree and seconded by councillor Abbas, so the council accepts the second quarter septic report as information, uh, presented? Uh, the next one is Kirsten with her request for the road closure and the fact that there's been lands or gift, this is a another one that was sort of dealt with, we thought years ago before any of the staff saving this room right now, we're here, so, uh, that's all good.
Uh, yeah, it's like Groundhog Day. Um, okay, so we have another subdivision, um, this one actually is on Matheson Drive and it's, uh, quite an old subdivision that consisted of about four hundred and forty-five incredibly undersized lots that would not support dwellings on well and septic, um. The subdivision process was never completed, basically the survey, the subdivision survey or plan was registered, but at the subdivision agreement, none of those things were were finalized, so, um, at this point, we've had a request to basically close all of the, um, roads and laneways that would be south of Matheson Drive, um, and convey to a particular landowner, um, there are some properties that have different landowners that are adjacent to some of these lanes and roadways, so they have to be offered the opportunity as well um, to participate in the road closure process, so this has been ongoing since, well, from a review of reports to council, I'm going to say, started in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, kind of flared back up in twenty fifteen and then again in twenty nineteen and then in twenty twenty, it just sort of disappeared and and now it's back. So, um, this report is basically for information because council has already, um, given staff direction uh, to declare those, um, roads and laneways surplus, so a bylaw will need to be brought back, uh, we have retained the services of our solicitor to assist because when it comes to, um, offering the opportunity to adjacent landowners, title searches have to be, uh, completed and that's something that is is best done by a lawyer's office and, uh, we will follow the road closure policy, so this is basically just to sort of bring our current council up to date on, you know, the fact that this is sort of reignited and, um, that it's, it's a little bit more intensive a process than the report was brought earlier this evening where there were, is a small piece of property with two adjacent landowners, we're talking about I'll call it a road system, there's a lot more land to be, uh, considered. If anyone has any questions, I will try my best to answer them.
This is a movie when you want to came by, what, what your anniversary council, looking at the match you do as well, and it's all kind of crazy and stuff and like, I mean, like, I don't know who they would have thought of and probably, you know, was probably designed probably before any of us were born, minus Jim. But it's like, well, like, it's just a mess if that turned, it turned into a, uh, a subdivision, we would have had a huge water and septic issue and all that, so, yeah, so I think it's, that we're just, hopefully, hopefully this time we get it all, uh, we all get it all cleaned up and everything else.
I think it was night, like around nineteen ten. It was before me. Yeah.
Great, cool, thanks, thanks, Kristen, uh, so, uh, moved by councillor Abbas and seconded by councillor Kenny, that, uh, council received their request for road closure and acquisition of lands report as information as presented in the state, all in favor? We have Steve, the mic, so he's, he's gonna talk about the second quarter, first update.
Absolutely. Um, so any questions on it, I can answer, but I mean, the maintenance zone, it went very well, all our asper plan just a shy of twenty thousand metric ton was put down on the plan roadways. Um, signage, that's one we're really hammering out right now, um, trying to calculate our corner radiuses that require chevrons. Um, we have quite a pile of them that are currently unmarked, that should probably have some cautionary sign in place, so that's something that we do have in our operation budget that we're going to be purchasing some chevrons and I'd say I'd see them coming up shortly. Um, calcium went very well, other than there was private shortages, like any crater right now. Uh, so we did get some waters were canceled on its last minute, that set us back instead of kind of the mid-June, we were likely wrapped up, we were into early July unfortunately, but that's all finished, um, that went as planned. Um, students are working very well, we, uh, are kind of utilizing them across the board and as you can see on the one, we really use them a lot on the noxious weed, so you have a driver that goes around with their contractor, um, and then I usually go with first of the just after spring when we started to see the parsnip starting to flower, um, and kind of inventory everything and see the breakdown this one on, so I did pull a lot of areas that were planned for either spot or boom spray and it didn't, um, have enough inventory of, um, parsnip, I pulled it back and actually outfitted our students in some beautiful suits to go and and pick, uh, I think about three hundred plants is what they had and then got, uh, forget how many lane climbers we had done there, but it was a lot of the roads, like virtual road, for instance, is very long, it was one that they handled and they got like there was fifty or so plants on that, so I mean, it's going to be, uh, as, as we've stated many times, if the county has presented to us, it's a long-term approach I take of this, but I think, you know, we took a really great step forward this year and hit a lot of areas, so um, everywhere throughout the township had some work done on it, um, culverts where staff is starting that in the third quarter right now, but we, uh, then toward what once have to be replaced and capital, it was a joy, um, had lots going on and we're just kind of waiting on our micro now, but, uh, capital for the second quarter was lots of fun and I was, uh, busy, which is good. Um, waste, it was garbage, it got picked up and thrown away and we paid the bill. Um, recycling, we transitioned, uh, just at the start of the quarter, so that is now, as we've discussed many times, kind of with our controllers, has been some growing pains, which I'm sure council has heard about, but the biggest thing for residents is, it's the same con or the same contractor that we had but a different collector, um, so their collection route may be different, so it's good for council members and the public to know that if your garbage isn't picked up like it was at seven thirty, as long as it's picked up by seven that night, that's what's going on, they just have their route that they're doing. Um, so don't panic if it's three o'clock and it's not picked up, that they're going to come around and, um, get it picked up. Um, crack ceilings on Matheson Drive was completed, Bristol was also completed with twelve thousand linear meters. Um, lots of fun permits, street sweeping, all that fun stuff, any questions? I have to answer it.
Thanks, Steve.
Uh, yeah, the senior has a question, uh, you were talking to the science factory before, the one going into town in Woods, is that going to be repaired, is vending over again? Yeah, so that figured you had it picked up, or is that one and the one down at the end of the street, it's whereas across it's all tipped down, it's been that way now for twelve years.
Yeah, so we're gonna address those in that friendly.
It's just a minor thing, I thought when you were talking to the sign.
Yeah, no, the friendly, friendly better off if we have a Montigny who's challenging with signage, um, so we are working at that and well, it's got, you know, some money for some other signs and that, so we're definitely going to focus in on signage, but, uh, it is on the do list, but that list is just growing day by day, Jim, so I'll add it there and we'll make sure it gets done.
I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
On road period. When I asked what the machine was driving, it was cutting, they, I know they were cutting the edges, but there is a lot of divots that people were coming, like, I know it's, it's, it's municipal property and that, but it was cutting divots and ditches and tossing gravel into because I I ended up having to hear about it, so, so what was it, why is it being done, and is there a way that we can mitigate the amount of gravel that ends up?
That's a great question, glad you asked.
I know, and I'm sure I have to ask, but if I don't ask, I'll hear.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I heard lots about it, trust me, um, I had lots of discussion with the folks.
Sure.
Um, and it's the maintenance activity that was completed for the first time and probably since nineteen ten we just discussed. Um, Montigny has never actually been doing that and what it is, is over the years of our winter grit, we use, instead of using sand, we use stone, that's where it's what collects on the shoulder, creates the secondary shoulder, which then will hold water. Uh, we try to focus in on our two roads that are getting micro because with the surface treated roads, the runoff is a lot less than once we do a micro, it's going to be a smooth finish. Um, so we're trying to make sure that our, we don't have any high shoulders, drainage, everything that is taken care of. Um, and there was lots of people that called and expressed frustration, but we've done the big one now, now it's very my kind of ongoing maintenance, um, it just extends longer than the other roads, it's all about maintenance and there, I mean, there's lots of beautiful attachments and fun things I can purchase for our creators that can reduce the amount that's put into the ditch. Um, but those are expensive attachments and it's something that can be discussed a bunch of time, but they are, uh, pricey. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's what went on is more or less just getting rid of that grit that was put on the shoulders.
Because I guess, I, because of being in the grader, I guess the blade is directly under the grader. It was not so much the grader that was causing the It was not so much the grader that was causing the damages, the wheels because creating ruts within their their pathways because the way the we, you almost have to put two wheels out to greater off in the shoulder of the road. So it was that I that was, I think, more some of people's concerns.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So I think I'm all aware of the the instance you're talking about. And what took place there is our our operator was completing this. Has been operating creator for twenty some years. He's a very advanced operator, phenomenal. Um and and what he was doing, he was trying to dump off material to save dumping that material into somebody's lawn. Um so he pulled up his shoulder, he put a bit of a dividend there, but that was so that the material he had collected on the blade went into a uh higher grass area than somebody's nice front lawn. So yes, there was some damage in the ditch, but it was more or less to prevent that from going onto somebody's properties what took place. Um so that I totally support what took place there and that's, that was our operator's direction from me and also his judgment.
A little bit maybe unrelated, but in the subject of gravel and ditches.
Yeah.
Did we ever get any results from like following the ice storm that we have? I think we talked about we were if anything was going to the province or something about requesting money to like solve some of these washouts on a more permanent basis? Do we ever hear back from that or was there more to that?
So that was a grant application with a minimum of a million dollars, which the road that we had to address did not meet that criteria, unfortunately. Um so it was for more bigger projects. Some of the, some of the projects that they funded is like embankments on rivers and holding those back and doing some really big projects. But we are always keeping our eye open on any kind of funding that comes available for those type of things. Just unfortunately this time, um it was a, it was an application that was so big, we really didn't meet that minimum criteria.
Yeah, I should kind of expand. We, this year, we just completed an over-road some ditching um on on one of the hills where we had a severe soft spot last year. So last year we went in and out of the road. And this year, the guys are back and from top of the hill to the bottom to a proper outlet, they actually ditched the waste grid that way and have a look. Um and then coming up soon in the third quarter will be Buffalo Richardson. Um there was really bad washouts there again, so we're going to be installing across Culver and doing ditching to actually put ditches there instead of just secondary ditch that's created itself. Um so within the the budget we have right now, we are trying to uh one spot at a time do some maintenance activities to do that. Um and of course, all of the reasons that were washed out during the ice storm, we're definitely have them on the list, but just one thing at a time.
Yeah. That bottom one was pretty bad and like frequently if we get a really good start and it just comes back and same as the virtual one, virtual a nice gravel. So we didn't have any further washout.
But those are all spots that are on the do list. That was just one of the time.
I got one more question. And this was a credit to you and your staff because uh I I called in on Dean Street. That that there wasn't enough stone on the side in township when I was on the last time they found hundred grand or so to do that. We do the whole road and I talked to council member that was on here the last time, had him go up and he went up and nothing ever happened to it. I mentioned it to you and it wasn't two or three weeks you were there, you put more gravel on the side, uh the pavement was starting to break up. And that's why I mentioned it to to save it. And you guys were in on the spot fixed it and and I'm sure it's going to save the pavement from breaking away.
Appreciate that. All right. Montague's lucky. Great group there. So thank you.
And we do a great group there. And I think one of those things goes all, we're doing those maintenance things. We see it sometimes, like to cut back trees to make sure the roads rise properly and and people don't like it because it makes it look ugly or we we do those cut parts too as well that and wreck something wrong with the the roadways, which I mean, we know that's going to frustrate people, but it's it's also for the uh the the guys are good at what they do and they're and they're trying their best to make sure that they're they're fixing the roads because that's the ultimate, the ultimate goal. So I think that's a big, I mean, kudos for some, some of that process though is is dealing with some of the people in the public kind of where you're talking about as well. Um I'm just trying to have a a chat to say, okay, like, you know, we're going to clean it up. And I think it's a great answer to as well. So it's not like a yearly thing either. This is a kind of a clean back too as well. So it's not like every year you're going to get that happening. It's 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 cleaning it back. So uh I mean, I I what we're seeing in the roads right now, the last little while is has been a a a big upgrade. And I think sometimes we see uh feedback back, like we we've tripled our our gravel uh in over the last five years, uh which is picks a lot of those that also has a couple other concerns about maybe dusters or or other things. Uh but we're actually seeing an improvement in the roads too as well. And I think the guys are doing a great job. Uh by use T two as well. Uh and I think it's it's it's, you know, we're we're seeing lots of lots of positive things. I mean, like co-drive looks fantastic. We've, you know, even the extension of the tool as well. Uh I mean, that's that was a, that was a great uh a great piece that needed to be fixed and and also uh extended. So I think uh I think we're moving in the right direction. Uh I mean, the recycling thing, yeah, I think I I think I even made a comment to you too as well because if usually my recycling is usually picked up at a regular time and it was like six o'clock, like what's going on? Uh but people, but once again, it's just getting used to sometimes that those uh we're creatures of habit. Sometimes we're 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 changing things for the good. Uh people don't always realize that or the gate. So it's a it's a very, very positive thing. So uh thanks, Steve. Your uh once again, the great report, great attention about what's going on, smooth and all, which is uh which is handy. Uh this is to talk about how sometimes you go out there and or back ceiling and do some of the stuff yourself too as well, which I think is uh sometimes I think you like going back up the trenches and uh checking things out, which is uh which is great too as well. I think the guys like that too as well. So uh it's it's nice to hear all those things. So uh thanks, Steve. Thanks. Uh so any other questions or when the girl Steve wants to know also or uh forget, okay, good. So uh moved by councillor Kenny and uh second by Reece Jennings, that the council accept the second quarter uh public works report as information as presented to state on paper. Scary. Steve is not going anywhere because he wants to talk about big budget item.
Thank you. Agreed. Um so yeah, this report for you is just trying, stop trying to get ahead of the game and starting to my uh boss is going to be hearing here soon for the budget numbers and that. So I'm just trying to get out of the game. So when we do come time for lemonade, um twenty four budget numbers, we may be able to have actual um numbers in front of us to do that, talk about and go into our budget discussions with an accurate number instead of staff ballparking uh that number, which I feel confident that we can do, but with the price are there right now, I believe this is the best bet to go ahead, tender for two years. Um and then obviously that's going to come back to council for discussion and then council can really sit down and see what we're looking at for budget numbers and then we're not over budgeting or anything like that. We know what we're working with. Um and staff went with a two-year um and two-year contract with two additional one-year um extensions. This is all based on CPI. Um and the wording that would be very kind of strict to all item material with set dates. So let me know exactly what we're working with. Um we just got a new contract with Campbell's Trucking, but there's numerous suppliers throughout uh our Montague surrounding area. So we'd be following our four-year con, our four-year plan and basically we can have the ability to award roads uh independently. So I mean, if there's contractors in the south that have better value for those roadways, we can certainly look at it word in word separately. So there's different options for council. They consider it once I come back with the uh report on that. But uh staff's more or less just looking for direction from council to go ahead and get this tendered and uh bring some numbers back to you guys before we move forward.
Actually, so you said there's two one-year extensions. So in the past, you've had one one-year extension. So there's just a recommendation to put two one-years then?
Yeah, so it means lots.
We could potentially go four years without having to re-tender.
Absolutely. We we technically can go up to five years. Uh is what we do. There's all different kinds of things. Um I'm kind of two years good. We lock in two years right now. And if the prices come back high, we can update it after the two years and kind of re-tender that it can get better value. But it's just kind of to have that four-year plan we have in place that we know exactly what's going on.
Yeah, I think the uh uh it's it's important, especially looking at budget, because we we know what we're going to do. We know where the gravel is going to go. And I don't think there's a flavor uh on council that wants to change that as far as reducing. So I think it's uh, I think it's great that we're we're going to look at and make sure some higher numbers because we don't know if it's going to be changes or not, or bigger changes that we are on purpose. It is and also might help you if things come in the right way, that uh you might be able to look at other projects that we could uh continue to work on and assuming it goes forward. So.
Yeah, so I think one important note is to look at on the table I provided, just kind of the Montague cost responsibility. So I mean, a lot of the the one two years upcoming are heavy on the kilometers per year, which is going to be a higher cost and we'll get the tender result back. But that'll all be billed by staff a fifty percent to Ottawa and uh drumming our thumbs as well. So there's something to keep in mind when we do bring that post on the back.
Yeah, it looks scary. Sometimes the extra fifty thousand dollars where that can go. It's like, wait, wait, we won't worry. We'll get that money back. It's good. So it's a, it's good. Let's try, Steve. Thanks. Any other questions as far as that goes? I guess it's a great idea that they give us higher numbers for the budget. So I agree. Perfect. All right. Go. So moved by Reece Jennings, the second by councillor Crafty, the council staff to receive the tendering to your gravel maintenance contract for twenty twenty-four prior to budget approval will all pay her.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Uh the next report is the overtime reports. Ellie, you can touch on it if you want.
It's um, thank you, Chair. It's, there is not a whole lot to discuss. It's um relatively what we're under um in most cases, especially with the admin side, other than the fire doing water on Saturdays and Sundays. They have to do it every day of the week. So that kind of throws off the admin side, but other than that, um keeping in mind that we were still down a full position, we still were substantially under the overtime in the previous three years.
Yeah, we're in good shape as far as that line goes there. That's great. Any questions? And so councillor, moved by councillor Crafty, second by councillor Bass. The council received twenty twenty-three second quarters report on staff overtime as information on paper. Next one is Ellie and the capital work grant projects update.
Yep. So this was a relatively new report that uh we started bringing to council the last quarter. Uh the council had thought might be a nice thing come forward on a regular, regular basis. So we tried to take some photos as well um of kind of some of the projects that have been undergoing um throughout the second quarter or um for council and some public. So you will see that as as Steve had mentioned, um he's been relatively busy the last quarter. Uh he did take on um looking after the paving project at Rosedale um and all of the fencing at Rosedale, um which did take more staff time than it should have. Um we're thankful that Steve took it over and it turned out to be uh a good job. You'll see a picture from Canada Day. Uh you can see the basketball court and the kids playing and things like that. And our accessible swing off to the right hand side. We have the new roof on the uh post office, which Steve also uh looked after getting that done too. Um it looks exceptional. It no longer have a hole in the roof. So the next thing is to potentially get it cleaned out and maybe move the little library inside or or additional books inside where they won't get wet and potentially the basketballs and things like that for kids to play with. Our generator is beautiful. Um it's running, it's working. So now we have a legitimate space that if we continue to get some of these storms and people lose power, that we have a space that um will be available and open on a regular basis. At the back, our pollinator garden was planted by our students. Um they did a great job. They leveled the topsoil, did all the planting. Um we have some things growing back there right now. I'm not, I'm not sure what everything is for the cayman seeds and and things like that, but we've started that. Um and they're actually excited to work with us and um potentially provide us some additional funding for other things. So it's great. Uh you'll see a a photo of code. Um I too have received uh positive feedback actually on the cruise on Saturday uh for people that don't even live on code of how great it is. So um great job by all of that. So it's been a busy quarter. Um but you will see as far as budget-wise goes, um we're sitting in a, in a good spot. Um most things have been under budget or on budget. Um the whole, obviously, Rosedale, one hundred forty-three thousand was funded through grants. Um the wifi, the fencing and the generator at Rosedale, fifty-four thousand of that was funded from grants. Uh ISF, so our new windows here, our new flooring uh throughout the office, um with the exception of my offices left. And then the accessible doors are ordered and should be in in August or September um in the buildings here and at Rosedale as well. We'll all be covered through that. Um celebrate Canada. So we did have our Canada Day. It's on in this quarter, but um we had one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars to put towards our Canada Day celebrations that um were a success. And uh so that's great. Uh we just started our senior community grant stuff last on Saturday um as far as the boat crews and we have some great things coming. We are waiting on responses from our grants from Inclusive Community Grant, FCC Agri Spirit, uh TD Community Grant, and I just applied for the Senior Active Living. Great. Um so those are ones and we're always on the look for other grants um for for free money so that we can continue to upgrade the municipality, not wasting taxpayers' money um and uh doing great things.
Thanks, Ellen. I mean, I think that's great. It kind of loses to our strategic plan up report update too as well. When we talked about like, we looked at Rosedale uh years ago, I remember when I first came on council, like what are we going to do with this, with this place? It's either fix it up or or do something with it. And and I think, you know, doing that with all of the grant money uh has been a huge benefit. Uh so instead of maybe getting rid of it or letting it fall apart the way that it was falling apart, um now it's a, it's it's a hub and it's a place to go and it's and it's uh it's also an emergency place to go to as well. So I think, you know, that has really turned around, which has been, which was huge. And the code road, when I see other two as well, you know, that's expanding on some of the uh the tar and chip or or paved road roads too as well. So I think uh you know, that's this is a good, you know, positive report for Steve. So so thanks, Ellen. Any other comments or questions at all? Very perfect. So um my councillor have asked and second by councillor Kenny, that the council accepts the twenty twenty-three capital works and grant projects report, projects update report presented to state uh as information all over. And a quick uh strategic plan update to everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the strategic plan uh began in two thousand seventeen, was finalized in two eighteen. Um it is to come back to council with an update on kind of what's happening within on an annual basis. So we're bringing forward, there's been a lot of changes actually the last even little bit. So um we're just bringing forward kind of an update, what's happening. Uh my recommendation would be that we might actually need to look at an updated strategic plan. We've we've checked off a lot of items or maybe we need to look back and and resurvey the community and and get new informa- or new data um to see how individuals are feeling about certain areas. Um I'm not going to go through everything that's been done, but I did include a current kind of uh column saying these are things that we've taken on. Um we'll obviously continue to grow on these, but um it's been it's been five years since the last one implemented and we do have a new council. Um so we will be including in the budget for that to be completed next year. It might be something similar to our pay pay review though, or maybe something that staff can actually take on themselves. But we'll include it in budget discussions uh to see what the council uh feels about that.
Thanks, Ellen. Yeah, I think it's uh it's nice to go, like, kind of look at that report and kind of see what's how things have kind of gone since we've, since we've done it. It wasn't one of those things that was done and then and a shelved and and nothing was sort of accomplished from it. I mean, you can see that it was uh, it's been worked. Uh there's lots been done uh that kind of goes toward it from seniors programming, which we weren't doing at all five years ago. The youth programming, bringing back the 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 recreation committee, the culture committee, uh which we weren't doing five years ago. Uh you know, doing some of the road stuff. Um and like Rosedale, like we talked about and everything else. So I think there's like the, all of those things that weren't being done. Uh and we and we got in there and 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 this report was done and and now we're implementing so much of it. So I think it's a, it's a very valid point that uh we had to look at. Coming back to it and saying, okay, well, we've actually accomplished things. Not like a lot of government that just does things and shelves things. So I think it's fantastic to to see. Um and maybe, you know, what what the next step is to as well. And I think we've also done that too as well. Uh we should be aware of the almost, I think we had the least amount of tax increases that any, any uh township uh or town in the county too as well. Um so I think we've, you know, it's 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 been quite uh quite a compliment too as well. So kudos to staff and and the council. Any other questions or comments about it all? It's fantastic. So you should be happy. Uh moved by councillor Kenny and second by Reece Jennings, the council except strategic plan update report as presented to state as information all over. That's scary. Uh the budget report. For overview of that, Ellie. For overview of that, Ellie.
Uh thank you, Chair. So I don't have anything um real drastic as far as up to June. Uh obviously, if we get further on in the year, I can give a little more detail on kind of what's happening. Um currently, we're sitting in a good financial position. Um there's no concerns as far as the current financial position from from the treasury perspective. Um is there any questions from council?
Supplies of twenty-one fifty-seven.
I think that's just allocated in the wrong place. I can't look it up right now, but I will take a look.
Okay.
Um. Oh, it might. Yeah, let me take a look.
Sorry, I should have I should have wired that off to you earlier, but uh.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions at all or? I see none. So uh moved by Reeve Jennings and second by councillor Craftery, that the council receives a budget control report as a June thirty twenty-three as information all over. That's period. Lack of questions or needs that the things are going in the right direction. So that's a good sign to move on. Uh this one's kind of exciting. The township clothing, so Ellie will talk about that, about uh the interest that people like to have in it as well.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So we've been getting, since we've gotten the hoodies, the lovely golf shirts, I like that everybody has their. Their gear on. Um so we're getting questions from the public about purchasing our hoodies, purchasing our golf shirts, person- purchasing our ball caps. Um so I guess we don't have any policy as far as it's not including their fees and charges or any of those things. So. I'm bringing the report to council to recommend that we do approve the sale of some of our township um articles. Um at cost plus ten percent of bin fee because it does take staff time to look after it all and and do those things. Um even at that, it's very reasonable. Our hoodies were under thirty-three dollars. Um so I think that. It it serves almost as a um a promotion. If if people want to pay to wear our clothing and promote us. Um I think that that's a good thing or that they have pride in their municipality and want to wear that. Um. So our recommendation is that we will. I think that we'll keep a couple of items on hand, obviously, to to have here. Um but not a huge stock of anything. Um and potentially, we could even put our interest to the public and say we're putting in an order. Here's the sweatshirts, here's the golf shirts. Would you like to order? Here's the cost. So um we have all those options. Um. And then our ball caps are ordered. Um they'll be in in about sixty days. So we will have them as well.
Thanks. I mean, I think this is a great idea and they're and they're they're pretty awesome. I mean, like we're partying like the ball caps from from Gongsho, which the the county has. And I have a I have a couple of those that uh my wife and kids like to steal from me and wear it. So it's uh they'd be obviously they like to wear these too as well. And even the Montague hats, I I had those and sometimes I'll get to wear them because one of my family members decided to take it too as well. So we have some very nice things. And the Gongsho hats were like eighteen bucks a piece with them. So I mean, like a twenty bucks a pop for a pretty nice Montague hat. I think uh people uh. Will wanna wanna buy some. So I think this is a uh great that people also have an interest in wanting to wear uh our Montague stuff too as well. Uh I know I love wearing my Montague belt shirt at the golf tournaments. Uh I was at a golf tournament uh for Champions for Kids for the uh and it was. Uh you know, and I brought some swag from us too as well that that ended up, you know, selling in the saddle auction for one hundred bucks. Uh and I had my Leonard County hat and my Montague shirt on and I had lots of people coming up and saying, you know, like, we love this shirt. We love you. We love you guys from the county and all that kind of stuff. So it's a. It's a, it's it's pretty nice to have that stuff, especially at the golf tournament stuff.
And it has no impact on the repairs if we sell this.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, like, there's no cost to your taxes.
No cost. Yeah, exactly. This this the stuff is, yeah, exactly. It's it's just swag and and uh and and they're been the prices reasonably. I get a Gongsho hat for twenty bucks with, you know, Montague on it and I've seen what they look. Like uh. Any other questions or?
Jim, a bad lot of separate fees and charges.
Uh perfect, guys. All right. Everybody's good with that? Yeah, so moved by councillor Craftery and second by councillor Avast, that the council approved the sale of the township clothing at the cost per article of only plus ten percent of bin fee. Last thing is the Leonard County Climate Action Working Group.
Thank you, Chair. So the county reached out and was on the June twentieth council meeting for council to provide comment or questions back to staff. Um prior to August for us to forward to the county. So we did receive um a comment from council. Um staff have some questions and comments in relation to the document as well. Um as included in this document. Uh so it's back on here to make sure that we encompass everything. Um that council would like to kind of put forward uh and staff will be putting forward their comments as well. Any questions?
Ellie, is uh I'm sure everybody read the the comments that that staff have. I think they're all legitimate questions. And uh I I support those. If any other questions or concerns, you know, those questions at all. I see none. Thanks, Ellie. Uh so we'll move by councillor Avast and second by councillor Kenny. The council approved this uh. Through my comments and questions, the Larry County Climate Action Plan Group on behalf of Montague Township all over. Though reports of many small petitions, though, most of the most we don't have any business. Before we adjourn, will we have any burning questions from the audience, online world or? Shaking or seeing a shaking in the head? No, so that's a good sign. Ellie has none.
We didn't do it. I don't think we should have. Then that's our first, our new staff. On the last, but she's here.
Oh, yeah. Introduce her. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I can introduce our new deputy clerk, um Sarah Thompson. She was appointed at our last meeting of June. Um so she started in July. She'll be with us for a couple of months. And then uh she'll be off on a leave for a short time. Yeah.
I would have been here last time I was on the page of the province, otherwise Allison did extend an offer for me to come and I definitely would have, but. I was, I was in the province, but I'm here now.
Here now, Sarah. It's uh welcome to the, welcome to the team. I think you're starting to settle in now and you're starting to see the uh wonderful staff. And somewhat be a council that you have to deal with. So. So I'm glad that you're here uh for the the short time, but I think it'll be a long time after uh.
Yeah.
After this, so that's good. So so welcome, welcome to the group, welcome to the team. So.
Thank you.
Awesome. And we're all good. No other questions? Not that the whole, all right. All the quits for tonight. So moved by councillor Kenny and second by Reeve Jennings, that the community of the whole meeting for August first twenty twenty-three now adjourned. At eight oh three P M. All in favor? That's scary. Thank you, folks, and we'll see you again in September.